I'd like to call over the Clive City Council meeting for July 27th. Would the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Council members, Klein?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Judkins?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Michel and Amy?
Very good. If you'd all rise and join us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. I know with no changes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second, approve the agenda. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda is citizen presentation. This gives citizens the opportunity to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone here this evening who wishes to address the council on a matter not on the agenda? Pete, and I'll ask you to check and see if there's anyone online as well. And while Pete does that, I'll just remind everyone of our operating principles. Clive supports character counts. We endeavor at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In connecting our work, we expect everyone to act in a respectful manner consistent with these. Pete, do we have anyone online?
For those participating online, you can get our attention by using the raise hand function on your Zoom screen. In the bottom of that screen, you'll see the reactions emoji. If you click that, one of your selection options is raised hand. Your honor, there are no hands going up?
Very good. Move on to consent.
Move a resolution.
Second.
Motion second on the consent items. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Very good. Next, we move into presentations, starting with Doug. Or Amanda.
Yes. If Catherine wants to come up, we're very excited today to introduce our new planner in the community development department, Catherine Purvis. She just started with us last Monday. She's already been a great addition, proving herself very useful. So she actually worked for the city of Waukees for a little over seven years in their community development department. And then in that time, she was able to complete her masters in planning, and we were able to steal her away. So we're really excited to have her join the team.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Look forward to being a part of this team.
Any, go ahead.
For moving up.
Thank you. I figured it was time to send someone the other direction.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that. Welcome. Thanks, man. Now, Clay.
Mayor, council, thank you. I'm here to introduce two of our newest paramedics and firefighters, Dave Haydenfeld and Kayden Hudson. Kayden's coming to us from Pell Ambulance, and Haydenfeld came from Madison County. So two fantastic experienced paramedics. What I kind of wanted to touch on a little bit is this puts us at full staffing. We haven't met at full staffing for two plus years now. But about a year ago, we kind of restructured some of our job descriptions and who kind of we were looking for to complement the fire department. And we, at that time, we'd created a paramedic only position. So we're very aware of some fantastic medics out in the county, but we wanted to try to get them here. So we created this new position. So these two gentlemen have a fantastic history of very experience out in the county. So they're going to bring a great wealth of knowledge to the city of Clive, and we're gonna get full staffing. So pretty proud of that. So welcome.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask that Dave has a history with the mayor, too. So.
Really? He's a longtime Clive resident.
There was an incident a while ago.
He was about three.
But a privilege and an honor to be part of the Clive Fire Department. So thank you all. Hello, I'm Kayden. Thank you for having me. Excited to join the team.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Next up, I think we have Jeff with an introduction.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity. I'm happy to be here tonight to introduce to you our two newest public works operations specialists. I've got Logan Herring and Colin Letting. Logan comes to us with some experience in grounds maintenance, going to be a good addition. If we ever have a softball team, even a better addition because he plays professional baseball. So we're excited to have him here. And Colin comes to us with some electrical background. So great additions to our team. Logan started on the 10th, and Colin started on the 14th. And since the 14th, we've been at full staff until tomorrow with another retirement, we'll be down one again. So for a few days here, we were at full staff. It was good to have that happen. So I introduced you, Logan and Colin.
You might hope for a kickball person after that staff game I watched.
Okay, okay. We'll look for that. We got an opening now. Counsel, any questions?
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Always good to see new employees here. Next time would be our public hearing. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Public hearing notice was published in the Des Moines Register on July 21st, 2023. Amanda?
Good evening again. Tonight, we have before us the public hearing that would grant a temporary construction easement to Emerald Isle Land LLC. This is consistent with the preliminary plot, site plan, and construction drawings that have been approved for the Emerald Isle Town Home Development. And we do have representatives from Emerald Isle Land LLC here tonight. If you guys have any questions. Staff has not received any public comments or inquiries since we did notice. And with that, we would recommend approval of the temporary easement.
Questions for Amanda?
Move to close of public hearing.
Second. The motion and a second to close public hearing. Before we do, is there anyone online or in the chambers that wishes to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And with clerk?
Aye.
Aye.
And the public hearing is closed by a vote of four to zero.
Move a resolution granting the temporary construction easement to Emerald Isle Land LLC.
Second. I was giving motion to second on the resolution. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And with?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes four to zero. Next item would be the possible second consideration of ordinance 1136. Amanda?
Thank you. Matthew, at your leisure, could you do the doc cam? So at the last council meeting, we had the public hearing and first consideration of the rezoning for the Northwest 156th Street and Emerald Isle Drive properties. That is the north half of this development plan exhibit. And at that time, council did direct staff and the applicant to continue working, not only together, but with some of the adjacent properties to try to alleviate some of the concerns that had been raised. So since that time, staff has met with some of the neighbors. I know the applicant has met with some of them, and then staff and the applicant have further discussion on the preferred option for the public improvements installation and funding. So I can give you a quick update on that tonight. We did meet with them and came up with five different alternatives. We have narrowed down on one preferred alternative, and that would be that MFP, the developer, would at their, on their timeframe, do the design and construction of the road. That timeframe would be along with site improvements, most likely, which is typical. But before the car wash or lot would be opened for commercial use, before they would actually get a certificate of occupancy. And with that, MFP would front the costs for that investment. And then the city would reimburse MFP for the northern obligation of that as the properties, well, north and east obligation, as the north properties and eastern properties develop or within five years. Since we don't have any current developments pending for those sites, we did feel it was appropriate to put a backstop on that with the five years. And that does give the city adequate time to include these reimbursements in the CIP and budgeting process. So the applicant has agreed to that route going forward. And we are then now, with your guys' feedback tonight, we will go draft that official change to present to you at the third consideration for the zoning change and development agreement. There have been some other conversations, as I mentioned, with the car wash folks and the neighboring property owners. I know both of those property owners that have raised concerns are here tonight. I believe the Reiners are also present and may wish to speak, though they were not here for the public hearing. And at the public hearing, there was a misunderstanding about representation for one of the property owners. So we've agreed to give them the opportunity to speak tonight as well, to make sure their concerns are voiced. So with that, I know with the bank, there's been some conversation around additional restricted uses. Staff's conversation with MFP is that they are willing to add some of those additional restrictions, like laundromat, smoke and vape shop, liquor stores and dispensaries. They're willing to restrict those typical items. They do not want to, nor does staff think it would be a good idea to restrict retail or restaurant or fast food type uses, since this is some of our remaining highway adjacent commercial. So with that, staff would turn it over to the mayor to invite anyone up to speak if you would like to.
You have questions for Amanda before we do so, or anyone online with questions for Amanda? All right. So we start with the Reiners, since they weren't here previously. Please, and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Dale Reiner, 15441 Emerald Isle Drive. I was approached about a car wash there, and at that point in time, my honest thoughts were, it don't make no difference what I want. The council is going to do what they want. And I'm just telling you, that's the way I felt. I've thought about this a little bit, and I've got, they're going to pave in front of my house. They're going to assess me for this? Are they? I'm just asking.
A special assessment on?
It would not be typical for our developments to assess an existing property owner. It would come at the time of development. So at some point in the future, if you decided to sell your property for development, we would seek that reimbursement at the time of development, not with the current landowners.
Okay. The next thing is, is I'm not real crazy about having a car wash in front of me with the red lights flashing and all the noise. And is this thing going to be closed at 10 o'clock at night? Or is it going to run all night? Well, I'm not, I'm just, I'm against the car wash completely. I just, after I thought about it, it's, like I said, really, I said, come to me, and I just said, hey, I don't care, because council is going to do what they want to do. Now I'm forcing my opinion. I don't want car wash, period.
Well, we have representatives here from the car wash. We'll get the confirmation on the hour question when we have them up here. Any other questions or thoughts?
Not at this moment. Call you later.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. And then I think we have someone from the townhomes, perhaps?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm here on behalf of Emerald Isle Land LLC Town Homes. My name is Kyle Cradineer. I'm with Sullivan and Ward. We're located at 6601 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa. And we're here to ask the city to deny their request of Midwest Fidelity Partners to rezone the five R1 residences to C4. Emerald Isle Land understands and supports the city's desire to encourage commercial development. However, we believe there needs to be a balance between the commercial development and, and the planned residential and planned unit development as well. We would argue that granting this particular rezoning request will negatively impact and deter residential development to the north of Emerald Isle Drive for the following reasons. I watched the first reading online, and as stated in that reading, the, you know, there was a lot made of the light and noise coming from the proposed type of the car wash, and that would not be compatible, as Mr. Reiner alluded to, it would not be compatible for residential residents. Pursuant to Emerald Isle, Emerald Isle Land, Emerald Isle Land Company has been working with the city, and the city's been great for the past two years to bring this town home development to fruition. And as part of the development agreement with the city, Emerald Isle has agreed to produce or to build, I would call, high-end townhomes. And given all of the requirements that the city has placed on this development, cement board siding, minimum of 1,700 square feet, sort of just two cars, garages for each unit. These units will cost about, they'll go for about 400 to 425,000 per unit. There's going to be 41 units on the property as planned. And by my math, when we calculate that, if all, if all 41 units sell for an average of $415,000, that would add seven, over $17 million to Clive's property tax base. And we think that should be considered as you're making your decision here. Our client believes that the current, if the current rezoning application is approved, that it will negatively impact the value of their development, and it also would bring into the question the, we'd have to contemplate whether or not the project makes sense anymore. Because given the, it's our client's opinion that if the development goes, or if, or if all of that property is owned C4, then, then it's going to, the people that are buying at that price point aren't going to want to buy, they are not going to want to be right next to C4 property, is the, is the argument. And, and so we would, we would ask that the, that the property, well, that the, that the, the city council take that in consideration when it's adding up whether or not this makes sense from a, from a development standpoint. In addition to the concerns about light and noise, it's our understanding that the, from conversations with the city, that the Department of Transportation, at some point in the not-so-distant future, is going to, is going to close the turning lane to eastbound traffic on Hickman onto the east leg of Emerald Isle Drive. And if that happens, then anyone wanting to access this property, they would have to go north on 156th Street and then turn on to the, to the north leg of Emerald Isle Drive to, to get to the car wash or any other, any other businesses that are in there, which would go right in front of, which would go right in front of our client's development. And, you know, obviously, we feel that that would be, the increased traffic would not be appealing to residents. We think that there would also be safety concerns if there are kids involved. McCoy, do you have a question?
No, I'm just, I will. I'm thinking this through. I, I'm trying to get my bearings on what you're, where you're at. And I think I have it, but there's an example of exactly what you're talking about down by CBS, or Walgreens, CBS, right on Hickman. You have an entrance on that main road that goes by the old farm that there, but then there's townhomes right behind it, a whole bunch, I think, the Red.
Could be the Walgreens, it'd be just west of here, yeah.
Yeah.
Sheridan Avenue.
So it's almost the exact same situation, right? You're going down one main road. You can only turn right. There's a beautiful townhomes right behind it, fully occupied, wait, you know, waiting list. So it's doable. It's, it's a pretty nice area.
Sure, sure. And, and obviously, you know, our, our client has spoken with realtors, and, and it's, it's their opinion that, that it would be harder to sell those, those units at that price point, which would then bring the feasibility of the entire project into question. And in addition to the current project, our client has also had conversations with the city about developing a similar-sized development to the east of the planned development. So it'd be further down the north leg of Emerald Isle Drive. And, and if this, if, if this rezoning application is approved, it would again bring that into, into question whether or not that would make sense anymore for, for him or for, for any other developer, for that matter. You know, we appreciate that you, as the city council, you have to do what's in the best interest for the city. And it's tough to balance commercial, commercial interests with residential interests. But we thank you for the opportunity to give our broader view, our perspective of what this means. We don't think that it's, that it's necessarily, yes, we understand commercial development is typically good, and we don't disagree with that, but there, there is benefit to increasing the tax base by a minimum of $17 million. You know, we think that that is, is worth quite a bit, too. So anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me or the client.
Go ahead, Ted.
So you mentioned that any C4 property would not be acceptable for your clients or desired, maybe is a better word. What would be?
Well, our client, so right now, he understands that, that the front half or the, the south half of the proposed property is C4. Understood that. And then the back half is residential. Obviously, we'd like to say residential, but if it couldn't stay residential, then we were proposed that it'd be, that it'd be zoned as C3 rather than C4. A little quieter, a little bit more, less traffic.
With C3 along Hickman Road?
C3 along, along Emerald Isle Road. Like, it would be C4 in between, in between Hickman, on the, on the north half of Hickman, and then C3 on the back half.
Cutting those properties in half.
Yep. Well, they're already, they're already cut in half, aren't they, or zoned differently?
Comprehensive plan hasn't come into where we're at today with C4. So I think for however long that comprehensive plan's been out.
That's what I was just gonna ask. Everyone around has been C4 in the comprehensive plan, correct, Matt? And I, I'm not sure when they purchased.
The last comprehensive plan was done in 2016.
2016, and so I must, I don't know what year they purchased.
Yeah, he purchased after, we purchased after 2016.
The information was publicly available. So I guess a couple things. So I'm a Realtor as well. You know, I guess I would maybe dispute a little bit your characterization of 400 to 425 townhomes as being high-end. It's almost median at this point. You know, that today with appreciation 400 to 425 is five years ago, 300 to 325. Still very nice, don't get me wrong, but it's not a 600, 700,000 dollar townhome. So I guess I would just quibble a little bit with that. I'm going to be honest. So when we started this process, my number one concern was the effect to the residential construction behind that. And I've expressed that to staff. I have full confidence in our staff that the lighting issue that keeps being brought up is addressed by the way that, that we do our site plans, and we make sure that, that all of that's taken care of. So that the lighting at the car wash would be no difference than if there was a Bebops right next door. There's not going to be any difference there. Okay? And so I, I personally do not see a severely negative impact to the property values based off my experience with what's going in here.
Sure.
Do we need to make sure we manage the light issues and the noise issues? Absolutely. I'm 100% there with you. But to say that we're going to severely degrade the property value of this to the adjacent development is, in my personal opinion, not accurate.
Sure.
The traffic issue, as Mike was saying, we have, there, there's examples of that all over the place. Where you got to go 156th, turn on Emerald Isle, that's really not an impact to that, that development. So, so I don't see that as an issue at all.
Sure.
Michael, did you have more comments? I have some comments for you, and I'll probably repeat it several times tonight. But if you're coming up here just to say you don't like the car wash, I don't either.
Right.
Right. It, it is not my favorite thing to put on Hickman Road, and there's 10 of them within.
Yeah, they're building another one right now.
I asked them if they could put in a microbrewery. That, that would be.
Right, right. A microbrewery would be preferred, absolutely.
We would keep it afloat.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't like it either. But you really have to weigh out the, the other pieces, and that's what I've been struggling with and still am struggling and will tell the third reading is, the fact is, it's been C4 since 2016.
Sure.
Everyone that bought around it knew it was C4, right? If that had switched, I have fought in here, arguments when we do switch the rules or switch kind of those things with developers and say, I don't think that's fair.
Right.
To, to switch in the middle of a development. I've had that debate here. At this time, it just, I don't feel like I'm here to pick winners and losers.
Right.
I'm just here to kind of follow the rules and try to sway what I can in favor of the city. It, meaning the residents.
Sure.
Right? And so you've seen the big fight on just the finance piece. It shouldn't be on the back of the residence. And we're here about that tonight, right, where we land. So that's my problem with it. Is that C4 has been there forever.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, we, obviously, we, the car wash is not the preferred business there for, for our client for a number of reasons, just the hours, the noise, all of it. But, you know, if, if the, if the, if the city council is going to go through with it, then, then we would be on board with more on board, and it's going to be a business decision for our client, whether, you know, I understand you, you're a Realtor. Our client has talked to realtors, and they have different opinions. He's going, they're going to be putting up the money, so, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit more difficult for that.
I don't mean to interrupt, but what I will say is that the, the townhome market, particularly on the west side of town, is, is, has probably the greatest dearth of inventory that's out there. It is one of the hottest markets that we have right now. Now, what's it going to be like in a year and a half? I don't know. But right now, that's about the hottest market there is because of the lack of inventory.
Sure.
So, and again, at this price point that you're talking about, you're right in the sweet spot. You're not at a overly exorbitant price point where you're going to price yourself out of the market. So.
Sure.
So from my perspective, this would be high demand, regardless of whether, again, it's a Bebops or McDonald's or a car wash. There's just not enough inventory right now. So.
Right.
I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
I guess I would add that, to piggyback on to what Iowa, Iowa Trust has been advocating for, that if, if the city council does go through and approve the rezoning, that we would also like to see maybe a larger landscaping buffer or, or some of the, some of the prohibitions that they're seeking to kind of tone down the, the type of businesses that can go in there, taking into, just, just to be more considerate to, there's as considerate as you can be to the residents that are going to be purchasing townhomes and being, and living in Clive.
And I fully support that.
That's fair.
Eric, Susan, do you have anything for Kyle?
No, good discussion. Thank you.
I don't have anything. I certainly appreciate, appreciate the, the thoughts for the participants. Thank you.
Very good.
I believe my client would like to say something directly, if that's possible. This is Sachi.
Hi. I'm Sachi Caldera with Ira Realty, and my husband, Aaron. We are doing this, this project together.
Why don't we put it on the camera? Can we do that?
Right here.
Flip it.
Turn it around.
Turn it around. We need to. Car come with the townhome or does not?
Can't hear you.
So these are pretty fancy. We were trying to keep the numbers lower so we can attract home buyers. If, really, if we want to be in the 475 range, yes, we can. But that's not the target. We are trying to catch those buyers. We want to get this project sold. Few things about CVS and those townhomes, and Ted is aware as well. CVS does not generate the kind of traffic that a car wash is going to generate. I don't know the price point of those townhomes which are behind CVS. I might have to look them up. So there's a difference in the price point of the townhomes. If we were doing. So there's a difference in the price point of the townhomes. If we were doing in the two fifty, two eighty, which we're doing another project in Waukees, those units are going to be in the two fifty to maximum three hundred range and we're surrounded by all the commercial. We have Grand Prairie Parkway. We have a lot of the apartments, a lot of commercial around, and does not matter to us because we know what we're getting into. Here, the issue is first thing we're making very glorified, you know, city had certain restrictions as to what we put up, how many square feet we put up. So we did make them fancy and we're keeping the number down and our profit down so we can get it going. Yes, can we get higher? Yes, we can. We made the garages extra deep. People can park their pickup trucks, which are rare to find. We are providing for electric car, you know, just another, what do you call it, another outlet in the garage. We're making them as fancy as possible. Now, we have nothing against the car wash. I mean, you know, we love to see everyone booming. It's just that where we are, we are kind of worried that we are putting in a lot of money and whether we're going to get that back. I'm just thinking, would I like to live in front of a car wash and pay four twenty five? Probably not. I would be okay if I paid two fifty. I'll be okay if I paid two eighty. But those are all starting out. That's our biggest concern. And then the traffic, you know, more and more, we were discussing when we were coming up here. If Iowa DOT closes that one Emerald Isle on one side and everybody's coming from this way to get their car washed. So let's say everyone has two cars in these townhomes, eighty two cars of the residence. Now, everybody else zipping in to get their car washed and out and around. I mean, just the traffic that it's going to generate, and these are two stories. So a lot of the millennials, a lot of the kids are going to be in this neighborhood. So just those things were really bothering us and it just, it's a big concern. Again, nothing against any booming business, nothing against car wash. It's just where we are. We have seen a lot of car washes. We actually drove around different cities just to see four hundred and twenty five thousand dollar, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar, how far the car washes were. So whatever, we noticed they were in all the startup townhomes, condos, apartments, not like these. So that's our biggest, that's our biggest concern.
Do you have any questions?
What's the orientation of this? So what we're looking at, right, is that facing south to the car wash and Hickman Road or is it the other way?
We will have a six, seven buildings. We'll have we will have a, these buildings will be facing north.
So what we're looking at right here is facing north.
That's correct.
Not Hickman Road.
That's correct.
And so their their patios that they have there are facing north, not at the car wash. Is that accurate?
The first building will be facing south.
Be facing south.
Yes. The second building will be facing north.
Okay.
What what you see with the white railing, that is on the north side, that is the entrance to it. The rear side.
Can you orient us here? Where's Hickman Road and where's Emerald Isle?
Hickman Road is here. Emerald Isle is here, one hundred and fifty six.
Okay, thank you.
We have the family patio on the back that is right off of all the traffic going back and forth.
You'll have a thirty foot buffer there?
There is a thirty foot buffer, yes.
The the commercial properties on the south end have a fifty foot buffer on the north side of all the parcels, including the bank, all the way across.
And then a road and then thirty feet buffer.
Correct.
The townhomes.
Yeah, we have thirty feet there.
Was it to the townhomes, Amanda?
That would not be our traditional landscape buffer. There are some plantings in that location, but the commercial has the obligation to provide the buffer. So the residential doesn't have an additional thirty foot that's not really densely planted. So just be more trees here and there, sidewalk type, typical kind of street scape and planting.
And sir, would you get, come to the mic and identify yourself for the record, please?
Rich Ayers, Ayers Design Group, I'm the architect for this project. Six eight seven six Harding, Indiana, Iowa.
Thank you.
The the biggest concern is if you're running a vehicle through the car wash every four minutes, you have a car going there and then five minutes later coming back. Times, you know, an hour, that is a lot of traffic that is going to back up at this intersection because they can't turn left until they have a clearance here. And you have a stoplight less than a block away that's going to stack up traffic. So if you have a restaurant, then you have a car coming and they're eating there for a half hour to an hour, depending on the type of restaurant, and they're leaving. So you don't have the volume of traffic that a car wash creates. That's one of the biggest concerns is the volume of traffic that has to go in and out this way. Whether you're eastbound or westbound, you have to go through this intersection twice.
Well, not necessarily. We've got the hour drive to the east that if you're coming west, you could turn north and and go into it, right? So I mean,
Right.
So there is some mitigation there.
So what you're going to have happen is when this starts getting blocked, if they go north, they're going to cut through the development, which is where kids are playing in the street. So people are going to find they can't turn out because there's they're going to shoot down through here, come to this and come back up. You're going to generate a lot of traffic through a quiet residential area.
Michael, did you?
Twenty four foot drive.
Yeah, maybe we could have you respond to, it sounds like one of Ted's concerns and mine, and that's the time of purchase in the C four, right? It was clearly C four. You're a Realtor. You understand the C four and the and and that in two thousand sixteen, you bought the property in what year?
Two thousand twenty one.
Twenty one.
Actually, we have no dispute, as we are saying, C four classification renewed. It's just the usage of that car wash, not realizing. I mean, I, we stumbled across and actually they have also made an offer on another project that I have. So we totally get that. It's just what we were going to put up. If we kind of knew that they were coming in before, I wish we knew, we wouldn't have drafted this.
But it was under C four, right? Car wash is a C four use. And so you'd have to look at C four and say, anything under C four could could go in there.
The C three is the office space, but the five homes behind.
We're in the comprehensive plan of C four.
Yes. But my point is, you know, if the five, the five homes which are requested to be zoned to C four, what we are requesting is there should be a C three for the office usage.
I get that. My, look, have I said tonight that I don't like a car wash?
You know, I I respect that, you know, but I want you to know that this is a very big concern to us.
But it is to them as well. And when they purchase, it's a comprehensive plan for a C four. Look, I'm arguing for them and I hate it. I do not want a car wash. However, they bought it with C four, knowing it was a comprehensive plan for C four, like you bought it when it was C four, knowing and and behind was residential. And so now you're kind of choosing, asking us to choose winners and losers in a development plan that the Yeah, the fair play was out there.
You know, when bank decided to put the building up and they bought the lot, we were very happy. So we're being out against C four, the bank, and the question is about the car wash. By the way, this is not a car wash. It's a tunnel car wash. Lot more lights, lot more sound, okay, a lot more traffic. So it's a tunnel, you know, it's not like typical car wash.
Do we have any more?
I'm sure the Midwest Fidelity will
Oh, yeah.
address a lot of those issues.
Did you have a question for? No, you'll hold it.
Okay. I I appreciate your perspective. I do. I I understand.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah.
Kyle, did you want to say something further?
No, I guess that I guess that I just would want to reiterate that if if this is going to go through and that I that we would piggyback on to Iowa Trust and and ask for some sort of restrictions on the the type of properties, there's some sort of hybrid between C three and C four. Understand the position you're in, understand the position our clients are in, but but some sort of compromise would be appreciated and would would make them, would make the townhome development a little bit more be a little bit more comfortable taking on the risk of of building. I understand, Mr. Weaver, in saying that that they're, that the townhomes will sell no problem, but, you know, interest rates went up for an eleventh time yesterday.
Tell me.
And so, so I mean, you know, it's it's not, it's a little bit different. There are legitimate concerns and and anything that the city council feels that they're able to do and balance all of the interests, then we would appreciate it. Thank you.
And before we leave, Ben, did you have anything to add?
Yes, can you hear me, guys?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, certainly. I'm Ben Bruner of the Dickinson Law Firm at six ninety nine Walnut Street here in Des Moines. I'm here again on behalf of Iowa Trust and Savings Bank, which, as you know, is a neighboring property owner to the west. I believe Brad Spoor and Paul Pick are attending in person there to the extent there's any specific, I suppose, operational questions for the bank. But again, our primary request is kind of touched on previously was for Silver Star to shift its car wash developments that eastern lot, which again would address basically any and all of the bank's sound and light disruption concerns. And in an effort to resolve those concerns, we facilitated a group meeting, I believe it was about a week ago, and subsequently submitted an offer that we felt was reasonable to kind of resolve those primary concerns of the bank. And again, in short, the primary request is shifting it to the far eastern parcel and making sure the vacuums are oriented west, which would be away from both the residential development to the north and the bank development to the west there. And then coupled with that, again, I think we've hit on it. I think the parties and city staff will will hopefully hit on this, but I I think there needs to be an express requirement as it relates to sound, light and landscape buffering. So again, I I think that's something that probably needs to be formalized a little bit more detail as to the rezoning agreement. Our offer obviously was rejected by the the applicant, which again, in our view is unfortunate. And we haven't received any other offers to truly address those those primary concerns as it relates to the original plan two weeks ago. So I suppose as kind of evidenced by the objection of each and every neighboring property owner here tonight, these permeating concerns simply can't be addressed in the site plan and operational and developmental stages. We somewhat feel as applicants, minimal efforts to attempt to do so have fallen short. And that doesn't give us a lot of confidence as we kind of move forward that there will be genuine efforts to again, resolve the issues in any appreciable fashion once this rezoning and development agreement plan is approved, even in the site planning and development stages or in the operational stages that will take place on this lot or the car wash lot and the other lots over the next five, ten and fifteen years. So it's clear that the opportunity to avoid those issues is is basically now and only now. And it's clear you have the authority and discretion to somewhat dictate the future of this truly kind of a key piece of of real estate in the city. And you can do so to ensure kind of the best and most harmonious use, especially taking into account the neighboring property owners there. Despite the C four classification that is contemplated by the comprehensive plan, this council has restricted, and you did so with a portion of this property in two thousand sixteen, you can restrict certain uses. And again, that's essentially what we're looking for here is kind of a fine tooth review and plan. And we feel as though the car wash use is not compatible and harmonious with the adjacent uses. As it relates to the the street and sewer infrastructure, again, we just reiterate our request to ensure that a complete and timely completion of those improvements and ensure the costs of the same are accounted for in some, in the same fashion as the bank was required to do. And I think as I heard the proposal at the start of this public hearing, I think that is the intent. But again, I would just renew our request that, again, the cost be fronted by the developer, much like the bank did, to ensure, again, kind of financial responsibility and ensure the precedent that's been set continues for that parcel as well. So as always, we appreciate your time and attention to this matter and ultimately the concerns of all parties. And again, if there's questions, certainly let us know. But again, our our recommendation is to deny the rezoning request, and if not, to ensure the operation of the car wash is pushed east. And all efforts are made to eliminate or greatly reduce the sound and light disruption and pollution that will permeate all neighboring sites. Thank you.
Questions for Ben, either in the chambers or online? Mr. Reiner?
Yes. You were bringing up that the zoning on Hickman was, what was it, on on the north side, C three?
Well, it's split.
Well, on the north side of Hickman, that that's partial we're talking about.
Right, in the comprehensive plan, it's shown as C four.
Okay, when was that done?
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen. I've lived in my house since nineteen eighty nine. When that went C four, I didn't really care because I have R one across the street from me. Now you want to put C four across the street from me? No. Just no.
Thank you. Can I get a clarification on that from Amanda?
Sure.
In sixteen, when it went, the comprehensive plan changed, it was C four, correct?
Yes, that's the the land use recommendation for that entire block between Emerald Isle, one hundred and fifty six, and Hickman and Emerald Isle was designated as commercial and retail slash service, which corresponds to our C four zoning district.
So there was R one across from Mr. Reiner at that time. It went to C four in a comprehensive plan for future use.
Yes.
At that time.
Yes.
As well as the other piece.
Yes, and simultaneously, that north side of Emerald Isle went to primarily high density residential rather than the low density county subdivision residential that was there. So that's the longer term plan of the city.
And is that primarily because along Hickman Road, putting an R one would not be very marketable?
I certainly would think that would be less than ideal on Hickman there with the limited depth you'd be able to achieve with the other infrastructure. I do have one other point to bring up to the council. I conferred with the applicant quickly here, and there is a general willingness to add some lighting and sound restrictions within the development agreement. So we will ensure that that's included when we bring that back at the third reading as well.
Thank you, Amanda. Is there, before we hear from the car wash, is there anyone else with comments concerning that? Otherwise, we'll hear from the car wash. And if maybe you could start with the hours to answer Mr. Reiner's question.
Sure, sure. Yeah, TJ Nelson with Midwest Fidelity Partners. Thanks for the opportunity to discuss the project with you tonight. Getting to the question about hours of operations. So during the summer hours, eight AM to eight PM, winter, eight AM to seven PM. So we are always going to be closed in those overnight hours and late evening hours. As far as the lighting, you know, we'll we'll work with staff for our site plan when it comes time for that. And that'll be similar to other projects that are built in Clive. And as far as noise, you know, we've talked a lot about noise with the bank and others. The way our project, our current concept sits, the dryers, which is the noisiest part of the property, faces towards Hickman. And then we have a centralized vacuum producer that is also right there on that south side of the property. So no noise is really being pushed towards those residential residential properties, which is quite important to us because we want to be a good neighbor and reduce that noise for them. We also have the required fifty foot landscape buffer along the northern part of the parcels. And then we have an additional space for stormwater and then a northern access interior road. So we've got a quite a bit of buffering space between anything on the north side of Emerald Isle Drive. So, Joel, you want to?
Good evening. Joel Templeman with the Little Somali Law Firm, five oh five Fifth Avenue Suite, one zero zero five Des Moines. Just to touch on a couple items that were brought up earlier. Since the last meeting, we definitely took the recommendation of the council to go back to staff and the bank to have further discussions. As Amanda pointed out earlier, we are agreeable to amending how we would, how the Emerald Isle Drive improvements would be paid for. And so as Amanda mentioned, we we agree with what she informed everybody that we were committed to doing that. And we also did have a meeting with the bank. And with all of our meetings with the bank, the combination that we've been trying to make to them have been genuine. And I think we've we've shown that with all the adjustments we've made to the plans we've we've brought before the 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 council. But we simply just can't accommodate every single request made by the bank. And so in the most recent one, there were four requests, we're able to accommodate two of them. But the two driving forces are moving the, our car wash operation to the easternmost lot. And we just can't do that from a engineering standpoint. And also, that's primary reason, secondary reason is a cost standpoint. And so, and by doing that, I think it would be detrimental to the residential properties to the north. But we have agreed to add additional use restrictions on these lots. The ones that the bank's council had recommended or asked for. And we're willing to do that, and we can include that into a development agreement as well.
So there's full mutual agreement on the use restrictions?
Well, the use restrictions that we've that have been discussed, make sure I get these correct. So the ones that are already included in the come and go agreement from 2016, then ones that would be added would be laundry mats, vape shops, liquor stores, marijuana dispensaries, pawn shops, and self-storage units. Those were the ones that we had mentioned that were discussed. I don't know if there's any other specific questions for us, but we're happy, we have several representatives here from the applicant again. We're happy to answer any other questions you have for us, but as people have brought up, there's been a lot of site plan issues talked about tonight, which we know the neighboring property owners in this council are very concerned with, and we understand that. But we are here tonight for the second reading, and as councilman has mentioned a couple of times, our proposed, or our rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future plan use map. And our proposed used, use is a permitted use within C4 zoning. So we would ask that you vote to approve the second reading tonight.
The question's 10.
Joel or TJ, a lot's been brought up tonight about traffic. Can you talk to that particular issue? I mean, how much, how busy is a car wash like this? The car washes I drive by are not wall-to-wall cars all the time. So how busy are, are, do your typical car washes?
I think that's a fair, like you have a pro forma on this, or you would be building it. What's your pro forma show on a daily traffic count?
TJ Nelson again. So it varies, of course, with the weather, you know, but typical day is 300. And it just really depends on people's, you know, their, their daily routine, you know. They're working at home, they may go grab a coffee and a car wash on their 15-minute break, or they may go over lunch on the way home. So it's about 300, but it's, you know, one nice thing about the tunnel wash compared to a pull-in stop is you can get those cars in and out a lot faster.
But in your pro forma, you built 300?
That's, that's typical, yep.
So it's about 25 an hour over 12 hours? Does that sound?
Yep.
Like, that sounds about right.
Hey, this is a good calculator. I have a follow-up question. I think a big hurdle I have is you came in the last council meeting asking for two sites. And you put this one up, and maybe two presentations later, you showed us an exact layout of a car wash on 100th Street that we've asked to be on the east lot. To me, I've stayed at a Holiday Inn Express, and that's about it, but I'd say engineering, you could put it right there. So why can't you? And pretty specific, right? Like, this engineering won't work, won't work for me.
So thanks for bringing that up. So we've got a couple, couple of issues. There we go. So this was our original concept that we presented to city staff and to the bank. So that had the two-lot concept. Adding in that third, that adding in the three-lot concept shrunk our physical footprint down to about 1.3 acres. If you compare that to the other Hickman property, you had a shared access road along one side and had a little more space.
So we're on the same page, 100th Street property?
I'm sorry, Hickman Court.
Okay.
Yeah. So our space is a little bit shrunk. The actual layout, you know, the building, the vacuums is similar, but we don't have quite as much space. The other issue we have is, you know, we've got the landscape buffer that we need, the 50-foot. So we don't want to sacrifice that. Over on Hickman Court, it's all commercial, so we don't have any of those extra buffers. And if we push farther north, staying outside of that landscape buffer, we're going to lose a little more distance with, with the residential. And this access road curves up. And the reason it's curving is so that we don't have issues of people coming out and getting onto Hickman, stacking up and causing congestion onto that access. So that presents a challenge for us. Here I've highlighted that south road. You know, if we got rid of the north road, that then becomes detrimental for this third interior lot because they would have more access the way we have it laid out right now. And it also helps just with the overall traffic because we want people, people are going to typically stay off of this stretch, most likely. Having these access points because they can get out this way, they can get in this way, they can get out that way. So we want to keep as much access on the interior as we can. That's also typical of what was in the 2006 plan with come and go. And then our neighbors over to the east have a very similar layout with their access road inside. And then.
But what I'm seeing, it can be done. We just need to get rid of a north road or something, and we could fit it right in there to the plan that's. I mean, look, if you, if you brought up that plan on 100th Street and you overlaid it here, that's kind of what I'm intrigued by.
We're going to have to sacrifice something. We're going to have to be closer to the neighbors. We're going to lose stormwater. You're going to lose an access, which makes it harder to sell the other two properties inside. And the other main issue that we have is that simply the financial cost is quite a bit more. You know, we're, we're here developing for someone who, who quite frankly, doesn't want to have to pay that higher price tag because this is more valuable. Typically with a car wash, it fits in better, not on the corner. Corner, you'll typically see something that wants more, you know, access, wants more visibility. So we always typically fit a car wash better into an interior area. So, you know, feasibly, financially, it's, it doesn't work for us. It's not our preferred way of going. You know, again, talking with the bank, we've done everything reasonable that they've asked of us. But, you know, moving over just does not logistically work well for us, and the financial burden is, is quite a bit higher. So just to recap quick, you know, the lot size is different, the proximity to residential. Intersectioning roadways, you know, our Hickman Court, we only have one busy street farther up. Here we've got, you know, the intersection of the two are busier streets. So the stormwater access, the easements, it's, it looks similar, but we have quite a few differences.
Councilmember, may I make a comment real quick?
Yeah.
I think this is very relevant to the conversation. Take this one back here. For the 100th Street Hickman Court property, this is actually a private drive. If this were a public street, this would never have been approved. It does not meet access management spacing for a public street, which would be your entrance points on the other location. So that one really only functions due to that private drive, being able to provide the multiple access points that are required.
And the fact too, we don't have any access on the southern one, getting back onto 100th Street North. So we're limited to what we can really feasibly do to move that over.
That looks very similar. You can only go right into your property from this one and only out at the light at 7:05.
If you're, if you're.
It was identical.
If you're looking at the curb of where our vacuums are to the curb of where our, our car stacking pailings are, that is nearly identical. Once you zoom out a little bit farther, that's when the challenges start to be presented. And then zoom out even farther to, you know, our, our city-maintained roadways that allow the access in and out. And then the residential versus the commercial neighbors.
Any other questions? Ben, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, this is just a request for maybe clarification more than anything. But can either city staff or the applicant explain or confirm, will each of these proposed three lots kind of stand on their own as it relates to water detention? Because I keep hearing the reference to that Lot 3 as being needed for either temporary or permanent water detention, either for Lot 2 and Lot 1 or, or not. And I think ultimately, you know, if that is a, you know, a spot where that detention needs to be, I think that's going to work some operational challenges for any operation of that Lot 3. I just, I mean, the feasibility questions I think would remain for Lot 3. You know, if a car wash doesn't work there, I imagine it's a fast food operation that while different, I think ultimately would run into the same sort of feasibility issues or, or functionality issues. So just a question there as far as what that stormwater proposal is, both temporary and long-term for these three lots.
So from the staff response to that, the stormwater management plan, of course, isn't submitted yet. That is part of the site plan process. So each of these three lots will have an obligation to meet their own stormwater requirements as are laid out in Clive's post-constructions stormwater management manual. However, this is one developer. So depending on where it makes sense to place those and the size of the facilities and costs of scale, economies of scale of able to do that, it is likely that the basins will kind of act to provide the overall whole. Some might be larger on one lot and actually be providing a portion of the detention requirement on the other. You're likely to see all of the infiltration and water quality volume requirements met on the individual sites. But detention is reasonably, could be a mix of some onsite and then some larger on an adjacent property to, to handle the detention requirements. We do see that pretty commonly. Kinder Care Christian Brothers and the Office Building to the South have a kind of shared facility. So this wouldn't be as large, it's not as much area that it'd be serving. But you would reasonably see a similar kind of planning for the whole as you do with other commercial developments in the city.
If it were to be offsite, I think I kind of have a visual where it would go. It would have to be a partnership to go offsite, and it would have to go across the road, right? So would they have to put in the infrastructure for that stormwater to travel to offsite to another?
So the actual detention will take place on the sites. What would ultimately have to be conveyed is the release rate to the city storm sewer system. So those improvements will be part of the Emerald Isle Drive public improvements.
Then Amanda? Sorry.
No, you're good.
So I know we're not doing site planning, but I hear their concerns and I appreciate their concerns. Can, can we bake into the development or the rezoning, the agreement, some of the site planning with respect to enhanced buffering, you know, the lighting restrictions and things like that? Can that be done?
Yes, we can certainly add in requirements for lighting and sounds, maximum standards. They're not allowed to exceed for the site plan process. Additional buffering is likely to be difficult on the north side. That is also the low point. Iowa Trust and Savings dealt with the same issue. Their detention is here, so their landscape buffer actually splits both sides of it. It's reasonable to assume, since it's largely the same elevations and drainage path, that we're going to have to see a similar kind of configuration on stormwater for these lots as well.
So minimal buffering?
It'll still be the 50-foot buffering.
But as far as what we can put in there?
Yeah, it'll have the same number of plantings. It'll just be probably configured slightly differently than what we see. For instance, along like the Meredith Drive properties that are residential that have that nice thick buffer that's in a really small area, this will still be a thick buffer. But it will just be a little different than normal. It'll largely align with what we saw at Iowa Trust and Savings is what staff's assumption is. It would still fit within all of our zoning requirements, still the 50-foot buffer with the same number of trees. But to increase that, to make it a larger, say, 75-foot buffer, so would probably be.
Larger buffer, but thicker buffer, more trees, something like that to help enhance that and really create that, that separation between the residential and the commercial.
So staff's recommendation on that would be that our current buffer requirement is quite dense. And functionally, planting any more trees in it than are required is not going to work. It was really drafted as kind of the insta buffer idea with the long-term thought that as the trees mature, some of them are going to die out or be selectively removed for the long-term health of the buffer. So that's how our ordinance is drafted today. So it is a very dense planting. There could be some conversations around buffering of other, like internal lot lines. But again, that wouldn't be typical for our commercial developments.
Yeah, I'm more worried about the residential than I am the commercial side of it, but.
But it will be a very dense, green buffer space.
But something like the lighting restrictions and things of that nature, we can ensure that that's baked into this.
Michael, Ted, any other questions? Susan, Eric? Before we move further, could you?
Your Honor, I do mostly have a comment. And that is that I have really appreciated hearing all the conversation. I think the questions have been good. One thing that really strikes me though is for quite some time, there was an assumption that we were going to have a convenience store at that site. And as we think about all the things that can come with a convenience store, whether it's a fast food element, a car wash element, a lot of those things would have been expected with that project. So I don't see it as a major surprise to have a development like this proposed. And I do appreciate what the applicant has done to try to listen to those two concerns.
Thank you, Susan. Eric?
Yes.
Yeah, I would just echo some of the comments made tonight. And I certainly understand that, you know, I appreciate the fact that the citizens have come together and worked out some of these mutual points across, you know, we all want to see good development here in Clive. Certainly understand a lot of the concerns right there. It is a challenging issue. And I appreciate everyone getting together and coming and working towards more of a resolution, I would say that.
Thanks, Eric. Ben, did you have a final comment? Did I see your hand come up?
Yeah, I apologize. And maybe again, a request for clarification just based on kind of that most recent depiction that was up on the screen and the discussion around the buffering. As it's proposed, from my layperson observation, it looks like that western boundary, is there any landscaping or any room for landscaping or any sort of buffering on that western border with the vacuums pointed directly towards the bank lot, which again, has been one of our primary concerns throughout. And I, I feel as though it's just either no longer feasible to be addressed or it is just not being addressed. So I, I request clarification there.
Your Honor, TJ Nelson again. Yes, there would definitely be buffering landscaping. And then once we get a building on that Lot 1, that will also help reduce noise, and then we'll have landscaping buffering as well. So we'll have multiple ways of helping reduce noise carry from our, our car wash any which direction, once that's fully developed.
What will be the footage of that buffering between the bank and Lot 1?
So staff would clarify, when we refer to a buffer, we are talking about the prescriptive 30, 50, or 60-foot wide buffer that have a very defined what you have to plant, what variety it is. What would be typical on the periphery of a lot of our commercial development is the site planting requirements. That would be 1.5 trees per 1,000 square foot of open space that's required in the zoning. That would be 25% of the property, or in the C4 zoning, it would be 25% of the property. And then we also have typical kind of parking lot frontage screening. So coral foraster grasses, boxwoods, wagala, all those sorts of plantings we get frequently. So we would have that same expectation here, and those are zoning requirements. So any deviation from those would require a variance through the board of adjustment, so they will be included with the site plan.
Is this something we can work on or with the applicant on? I get that, that seems an easy fix, right? Yeah, another checkmark that can go. Yet another check mark that can go to the applicant's side of saying buffer. Instead of trees, you know, 10 maple trees, can we put a real buffer that brings the noise down from the bank? So between lot one and the bank, and now even really worry about the car wash to lot one, that's lot one's problem, right? But you're going to have to put it in the development plan now before we agree. I just, is that an option? Maybe that's to that's to the developer, you know, not maybe not an answer today, but that's, I'd like to see. That's a reasonable request instead of 10 maple trees, that there actually be something of substance. TJ?
And, sorry. I'm just going to throw up, this is our our sound overlay study. Definitely what we're working on the buffers, you know, our goal is always to be a good neighbor. Anything that's reasonable that we can do to to help our our neighbors. Right now, this sound study, um, really doesn't take into account the banks landscaping on their eastern border, future landscaping from lot one, a building at lot one. So once you get to the bank, our wash to the bank is 280 some feet. The the noise is really dramatically low. I mean, it's 50 decibels or less, which is the decimal I'm talking at right now. But we're definitely open to, you know, if we want to specify the type of trees to put into our lot, um, on that western edge, we're we're certainly open to that. We expected that to be part of the site plan later on, but if we want to have some of those discussions now for the development agreement, that would be fine if that helps the council get to a yes.
I have a hard time believing that that dark green just bam stops in a lot line. I mean, that's just convenient or that's not true.
We we the, we kept it just to our parcel.
But that's important for us to see it bleed over to the bank. I mean, that obviously bleeds over quite a bit.
So here I do have.
Yeah, it really only goes over so little bit.
This was when it was directly next to the bank. That one wasn't cropped, so you can see it still doesn't hit the building. I would also point out as we're discussing the sound, the bank's generator is located right here, not under load. That is going to be a similar decibel level to the green. It's going to hit around 50 decibels when it's not under load. The bank also has their ITM located on this side, which will have a similar amount of decibel. The property line is what the car wash is showing.
The backup generator?
Yes.
So only comes on when?
Yeah, but that's not with load. That's just it's, you know.
But as it's sitting there today, like our generator beyond this building is zero.
Right, but they're.
Talking once a year, maybe.
Yeah, they also have their ITM that is.
There's just 300 cars a day.
Sure.
That's the big difference to argue a generator versus a generator that only comes on once a year for testing.
I would also offer to the council that Hickman's going to be louder than most of everything here that you're talking about.
That's a lot of bleed over to the bank when you see the real picture, you know?
Well, that's also not the current configuration though.
Sure, but easier is the other one stopping conveniently at the lot line.
Sure.
I mean, Amanda, sorry, this is Ben. Can you confirm, is that orientation that you're showing right there? That seems to be with the vacuums on the eastern side of the property and kind of reorienting 180 degrees. But that obviously, I mean, I think if you flip that and envision the lot or the bank parcel on the other side, that's the true reality.
So we have this one that corresponds to this point here. So if you extrapolate that line out, it's still not hitting the building.
I'm missing that then.
But again, that would be a typical site plan for the noise, so we can get the full study at that time. But that's not really, the car wash is generated, noise is not pertinent necessarily to the C4 zoning designation.
Yes, what I don't appreciate is the play on that diagram of stopping at the lot line. I don't appreciate that.
We can certainly provide you with a new one. That was not meant in that way. And we we stopped the green at 50 decibels, which is the typical conversation tone. But we can certainly provide you with with an updated map as requested. To also add to that, this, sorry.
To the north, to the south. I mean, why want to see it to the north too, not to stop at the road?
Right.
It's literally stop there.
Yep, you can do that.
Any other questions at this point? Again, what we're looking at is the possible second consideration. With, if anyone have questions online, no. With with all those kind of directions of where we're headed for the next reading, I'd move that ordinance number 1136, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Motion is second, again, four votes required. Is there any further discussion? Have you explained to the, what this means it's not passing it? There's the second reading based on all the things that are raised. There'll still be, if if this passes, then there'll still be additional things that have been outlined. Sound like all these other things to work through before the third and final reading at the next council. Any further discussion? If not, would the council please vote again, four votes required?
I. I.
And with clerk, please post the vote. Second reading passes by a vote of four to zero. Good luck. We'll look forward to all the additions at the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
All right, the next item we have is body camera, so.
Evening, mayor and council. One of the projects that were identified last year during strategic planning was, uh, the need to replace our in-car and our body camera systems. Safely would no longer support our body cams. And when they would break, we could do nothing but throw them away because we weren't able to get them repaired. The in-car units are 10 to 12 years old and are at the end of their life cycle. Lieutenant Rayburg was able to buy us some more time when he got with Dubuque Police Department, who had just stopped using L3, got us 106 body cams that have been getting us by for some time. But the, uh, the box, when they, when they die, there's no fixing them. Our box of dead ones have about 50 in it and are growing daily, he can tell you for sure. And so they they fail very often. So we are, uh, there is some sense of urgency for us to get going and get our replacement made. On June 8th, Lieutenant Rayburg, uh, presented a results of his study looking at different systems to replace our in-car and body cam systems. And our recommendation is to go with, uh, GTAC that is supplied by Sector Technology in Urbandale. The total cost of the system is 300,846.7 as a one-time payment or 72,331 per year for five years for a total cost of 361,655. Originally, we had a placeholder in our CEP budget for $50,000 a year over five years for this project. We, uh, the city manager and director of administrative service have looked over the CEP budget and there is adequate funding to cover this cost without negatively affecting others. They recommend that we choose the one-time payment, saving us 60,841 in interest payments. So, uh, if approved, uh, we anticipate installation of new equipment, uh, in October and, uh, also setting up, uh, cloud storage for all of our data. And, uh, staff recommends approval and, uh, be glad to answer questions. And we do have representatives from both, uh, sector and GTAC if there's any technical questions.
Questions for the chief, I'll move approval. Second, motion second. Further discussion, Eric?
Chief, is there any ongoing subscriptions or licensing fees that we see involved with this moving forward?
No, that will cover us for about six years, three years into the program. It includes a complete refresh of all of our body cameras. So three years into this, we get, uh, was it 30 more body cameras and to replace those? And that will carry us through, I would say, for at least six years, we won't have to, uh, think about this again.
Council member, though, what I would add to that is that there will be, the the cloud storage portion of this will continue onward and so there will be a cost associated with that. And as you look at the information, that is the 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 cost, the main cost of the system is that. And so there'll be an ongoing expense that we'll incorporate going forward. But this package gets us to that point and then we and then we would much be on that.
With Eric's question that the in in your comment, the three years, this, uh, refresh, six years, all the software updates and all come with it.
That's all included in for the for the next five years. And then there'll be a subscription for our software after that five-year period. But we're, we can't tell you what that cost is right at this point. You can't, it's tough to reach out that far. We've, uh, what we have seen is that cloud storage is coming down in price and not going up.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote?
I. I.
And that's approved by a vote of four to zero. Next item, Richard, we have a professional services agreement.
Mayor and council, tonight I'm here to, uh, present the next, uh, step forward in the Indian Hills Woods project. And prior to taking some action on that, we wanted to kind of give you update on where we're at with everything else and what's going on and what to expect from here on out. The first part of that is the creek restoration. This is the work that has been done by Public Works and the parks teams for the last three years. There is one segment left of that that needs to be completed. You can see the the top photo in the circle there, the small section between Lincoln Avenue and Walnut Creek. They were able to get started on that last fall, but unable to finish it before the weather kind of set in for the winter. They'll be out there again this fall. Otherwise, all other areas of the street, uh, the creek restoration are complete. You can see a photo on the bottom right there of what it's, how it's starting to reestablish itself with the landscape there. And that's one of the big things that we've been doing everything between 98th and 100th. And Lincoln has been working to get that reestablished. We're excited to see some of the native plants that are starting to grow in there. We've actually seen signs of aquatic life. There's small fish that have made their way up into some of the pools there. So really seeing a lot of great things that are happening in the areas that have now had a chance to start to reestablish themselves and then we'll work on that again once Public Works finishes up that last section. The next big thing that we've been working on out there is the landscape restoration. To date, we have about 90% of the trees and shrubs that are, um, being added there that have been added. We've worked with as many property owners that were interested in working on us for the buffers behind their properties. We've gotten rid of about 90% of the invasive species. We still have a little bit of honeysuckle, a few patches of tree of heaven that need to come out of there and maybe a few mulberry trees. We're also working on the landscape, ongoing efforts to restore the landscape. That includes, um, making sure that we get the weeds out of that, uh, the slopes for the creek restoration. Those will be mowed on a regular basis and then the rest of the areas will be seeded this fall sometime. Again, um, once that's all taken care of, we'll be working on this probably for the next two to three years just to make sure that we're getting those native plants and grasses established, making sure we're watering the trees and shrubs to get to a point where it's a a much better landscape. Which kind of leads us to the next step of this. Next is the bridge and trail construction. Before you tonight is a contract with McClure Engineering for the design of the trail and the bridge. We reached out to multiple different engineering companies as part of the, um, effort to find surfaces for this and found McClure to be the the lowest price of the services. Just reiterating, um, what we heard in the past and the discussions we had with the council, but also with the residents, the trail surface itself will be a crushed limestone or a crushed granite surface, um, based on the the desire for the neighborhood to have a trail that was accessible, but a little bit more natural looking. So deviating a little bit from that, from our typical asphalt or concrete and going with that crushed surface. And then finally, the little, the yellow star on the map there, um, replacing the existing footbridge with a new prefabricated trail bridge, which is similar to all the bridges that cross Walnut Creek and other creeks within the city of of Clive. Then following, uh, tonight, uh, the next steps will be getting that trail design and construction underway, continuing that landscape restoration through the rest of this year and into the next couple of years. We want to add park signage, uh, once this is all completed. And then finally, we want to celebrate all the work that we've done out there. So hopefully by next summer sometime, we'd love to have a celebration with the council and the neighborhood to really, um, kind of highlight all the work that's been done on there the last three to four years and really see what this space is going to look like moving forward. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Richard, Ted?
If I remember correctly, the the work north of Lincoln, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, but part of, I thought part of that delay was, uh, we weren't ready to replace that bridge.
You're talking about the creek restoration work?
Well, not the restoration work, but there's a bridge north of Lincoln there, right?
There is not. The bridge that's north of Lincoln is to the east about four blocks. Eventually, at some point, when we replace the Greenbelt Trail north on the north side of Walnut Creek there, we will connect this area with a new bridge across Walnut Creek. And one of the things, the reason we haven't approached that section of trail yet is one of the things that has been identified in the Water Resources Master Plan is a remander of Walnut Creek there could potentially push the creek a little bit farther to the north. We didn't want to do a bridge across creek, but then move the creek and have to redo another bridge. So we're just trying to to balance it out.
None of that's changed.
No, that's changed at this point. The trail will dead end at the north side of Lincoln. And then once we get that figured out, then longer term, then it'll be constructed across there.
The original Greenbelt Master Plan vision was to bring, to have that Hunter Street connection all the way to the Greenbelt at some point in the future. And that would be still the plan, but to be determined in terms of resources and then figuring out the design of that re-remander at some point. There's some property acquisition that would have to happen as part of that as well.
Okay.
So.
Eric?
The original intent of that bridge was to link, uh, the Greenbelt along with, uh, Indian Hill School. In the scope of work, Richard, is that, is the dimensions of that the same as this or bigger to allow for that foot traffic over to Indian Hill School?
So the the bridge length itself will probably be about 10 to 15 feet longer. The reason for that is we need to get the existing bridge up a little bit higher and out of the the kind of flood floodway of the the creek here. So that gives a little bit more flood room, so it doesn't back up. But it'll be about 10 to 15 feet longer, but otherwise a pretty similar dimension.
Thank you.
Other, other questions?
I'm going to approve all of professional service agreement with McClure.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And with clerk, please.
I.
And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Matt, you're up with our rules of procedure.
Thank you, your honor. Following, uh, the National Civility Summit last winter, um, mayor asked staff to take a look at updating some of the rules to incorporate, uh, some of the civility components that were discussed during that summit as well as the the character count statement that the the mayor reads during the citizens' presentation at the beginning of the meeting. Also, we found this as an opportunity, since we hadn't updated these rules of procedure since 2019, to incorporate the virtual meeting aspects that we used tonight. We didn't have that specifically worded in there in terms of that participation. And so we felt this was an opportunity for us to clean up that portion a bit and then some typos and, uh, throughout the document, just cleaning that up. So, uh, with that, your honor, we have those amended rules before you tonight. On the packet, we highlighted the specific changes, showed you a red line version versus a clean version. We would recommend, uh, approval, your honor.
Thank you, Matt. Questions for Matt or action you'd like to take?
I'll move to resolution.
Second.
Motion is second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote?
I.
And with clerk, please post that vote. And that passes by a vote of four to zero. We'll now, uh, move into our reports, starting on your end, Pete.
Thank you, your honors. So now that the council's had a chance to see sort of game plan for Indian Hills Woods moving forward, we'll make sure we get an update on the project page and information out to the neighbors. I've walked that corridor myself a couple of different times this summer just to check in on how the plantings are doing. And, uh, we've, this with this council's direction and the excellent execution by volunteers and park staff, we've got some. we've got some really good plantings getting established. I've even seen some of the neighbors take a real interest in seeing it be successful and going out and doing a little additional watering themselves if they see something that looks like it's a little dry. So great to have that ongoing neighborhood engagement. And also really nice to see pictures from earlier this summer and, and late spring with the students from Indian Hills Junior High going out and doing a lot of those plantings.
How do things look on Clark?
I drove Clark yesterday and we are in full bloom with our blazing star, black-eyed Susans and a couple of other flowering species and cone flowers. And for year one of those natives, to my eyes, they look like they're doing very well. Our Parks team and the newly established Natural Resources team is very actively getting out into that space, doing the weeding. And it also appears that the neighbors have done a good job sort of taking care of the mowing needs to be well done along that, with a couple of exceptions. I want to compliment Jeff Teal and the Parks team also. We had a resident at the intersection on south side of Clark at the intersection of 107 note that they were, we were a little steep on the, between the curb and where one of the bioretention cells was starting. And after going out and looking at it and how the edging was even having a hard time getting down into the dirt, we agreed that it was important to go back and get that right. So we're in the process of doing that. I have heard from one other resident who lives on Clark during the Clive Festival who has a similar situation. So we'll go out and address that to just make sure we leave these in a safe condition so everybody can maintain them. But if you haven't gone through and taken a look, the continuity of looking from one of the cells to the other, to see all the yellow and the purple and then the greens of all the plantings on the trees, this is a, this is a major investment in some green infrastructure here. And to my eyes, that looks very nice.
Then all? Eric?
I don't have anything mayor from, from the report committee, only to say greetings from the national jamboree for Scouts of America from 20,000 other scouts here in West Virginia.
Thank you, Eric. Ted?
Only thing I have is I attended Clive Festival Saturday evening and to my eyes, it was maybe the best turnout I've ever seen. It was tremendous. I mean, the weather was great. Just want to give kudos to staff and Richard and his team and fire department and everyone that, that was out there working. It just, everything was great. I mean, it was just an amazing event. So we had a great time.
We could censor those new white shirts that got out there.
The Weaver Army was out in full force.
Lot of bags on Friday night.
Yeah, unfortunately I missed out on that, but we'll, we'll get Jeff's report here in a few weeks, I'm sure. So.
I enjoyed the Clive Festival too. The main thing I wanted to mention is last week, the Economic Vitality Committee met and we really started getting some good feedback from committee members. And you'll hear more about that in upcoming meetings, including the strategic planning process.
Michael, I'm going to do enough damage that McQuillan may have to jump in here, but Dart meets next week and they've called for the bullpen. So I'm going to step in next week, which is scary, right?
They want me there too.
So they've asked for our, just our city manager to be there as well. But it is a big vote. What I understand is it's going to, they're going to push ahead for the 37 million is what I heard to start the maintenance shop, the mechanic shop and do it in pieces. So it's over 100 million now as a full project. And they're looking to do just the mechanic shop in a piece for that, the money they have together today, right? They need to buy land must here soon, or they lose some of the funding that they have, federal funding. So looking for feedback before next Tuesday from this council. Obviously, I'm voting on behalf of the city, not me. And so I'll listen. Right. So keep that in mind and again, I welcome your feedback.
Thanks, Michael.
Anything from the legal side of things?
No report, your honor.
Matt, just a few items, your honor. Again, want to reiterate what the council said here tonight in terms of the Clive Festival. Again, great, great turnout, a lot of hard work from Richard and a number of people in the leisure services team, Jeff Lucas, Austin and John and a number of other folks and then from all the departments. So it was a, it's a success for the hard work that they put into it. And, and of course, the weather helps too sometimes. And we had that really work out for us last weekend, a lot better than this week, I'll tell you that. So we're very happy about that. Want to mention too, the chief had it in his monthly report, the police side, but the, the catching of the suspect at least on the bank robbery. And chief did a nice really report of how our folks were involved with likely being a key piece in identifying that individual for the, the bank robbery here in Clive and all over the Midwest, basically. Even out as far as east as Tennessee, I think was one of the farthest ones east or. And so again, kudos to the police department and the detective team for working on that. And, and then the gentleman who called from Minnesota, which sometimes you never know what a little tip will turn into in terms of connecting the dots for some of these cases. Also, you'll see in my weekly update to you that the seven-brew ribbon cutting is getting delayed back to August. They had some delays in some construction, some equipment. And so that will, it was originally going to be on Monday. That'll get delayed into August. A new date, I think, has been selected and I'll have that update for you. Next weekend, just a reminder, I know some of you are on Friday and some of you are on Sunday with your Zoom interviews with Lyle for strategic planning. So I will also share a reminder of the questionnaire that he has you take a look at and read through before your interviews. I'll have that in my weekly update to you all. Also wanted to mention that the mayor and I attended the meeting of Food Bank of Iowa last week to get an update on their status and a brief tour of their warehouse facility. I don't know if the mayor has any further comment on it, but it appears there is still conversations ongoing with, with Dmark and the Food Bank of Iowa. And that was pretty much all I think we could report on. If your honor, if you have any further follow-up on that.
But I think Food Bank was going to get us more data.
To share with the whole council.
Share with the entire council. And then let me know if you have an interest in having Michelle come and make a presentation so you can ask questions and such. Let me know if there's interest in doing that.
Yeah, they were going to put together kind of a thing specific to each community related to the food that comes into Clive that is distributed. Of course, our Clive Community Services food pantry is associated with Dmark and has not signed any agreement with Food Bank of Iowa. They have stuck with Dmark's arrangement at this point. So that is, but the food rescue is sound like that's all back up and running now. But yeah, it was an interesting update.
And there been kind of a line drawn in the sand, eat one or the other. Absolutely. Clive can't go with Food Bank of Iowa now that they're picking Dmark.
I don't know if it's that clear. I think you have some that are associated with both.
I thought that was the.
I think you're going to be.
Started was one or the other, but.
You're going to be associated with the Food Bank of Iowa. There's some requirements in terms of the amount of food, but you could still be associated with Dmark. I think that's rare on the, on the pantries that are that way. And hopefully I'm not over representing that, but I know our food pantry is just associated with Dmark at this point. That's all I have, your honor, unless there's any questions.
Very good. Matthew, do we have any correspondence?
Everything was in your packet.
Well, before we adjourn, we have some special guests here. Pete, do you want to introduce your special guest?
Sure, Ben, if you would, come on up.
Didn't know this part was going to happen.
He did not, but now we're here. The Assistant Assistant City Manager Ben for the day.
You know, just stand at the mic and if you could tell us a little bit about yourself, why are you here?
Well, I'm here, I'm here to learn about how, you know, municipal government works. So I started with my own local government and it's been, I've had a day, you know, riding around with Pete and learning about all the stuff that Clive is doing. And it's been great, really like connecting with all the aspects of Clive and what you are, are doing every day to help our communities. So, well, thank you. And that's been, you know, good looking at all the stuff you're doing. Yeah.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure everyone listening and watching knew the hard work that Pete had put into allowing you to shadow today. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And it looks like we have a scout with us. Do you want to come and tell us who you are?
Hello, my name is Thomas Drummond and I'm here because of a requirement in the Communications Merit Badge. And so I'm here and I've been observing this city council meeting.
What troop are you with?
I'm with Troop 48.
Very good.
So the troop here in Clive. And so, yeah, I've had a pretty great time.
We don't always hear that from people. Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 7:40. Thank you all.